Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this meeting of the City University of New York Board of Trustees to order. At the outset, I would like to read the following notice, which has been distributed into the record. The meetings of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York are open to the public, and the Board welcomes the interest of those who attend. Public has ample opportunity to communicate with the Board. Public hearings on the Board's policy calendar are scheduled one week prior to the Board's regular meetings. Members of the public who wish to communicate with the Board are invited to express their views at such public hearings. Furthermore, the Board holds additional public hearings each year in each of the five boroughs, at which members of the public may also speak. In addition, written communications to the Board are routinely distributed to all trustees. The Board must carry out the functions assigned to it by law and therefore cannot tolerate conduct by members of the public that disrupts its meetings. In the event of disruptions, including noise, which interferes with Board discussion, after appropriate warning, I will ask the security staff to remove persons engaging in disruptive conduct. The university may seek disciplinary and/or criminal sanctions against persons who engage in conduct that violates the university's rules or state laws, which prohibit interference with the work of public bodies. I would like now to request that everyone take a moment to switch off his or her cellphone. Thank you very much. As usual, CUNY TV is making available a transmission of the public sessions of this afternoon's meeting of the Board live on cable channel 75. This meeting is also being webcast live and can be accessed by going to www.cuny.edu. Further meetings of the Board will also be webcast live. Public sessions of the Board meeting will be available as a podcast within 24 hours and can also be accessed via the CUNY website. I'd like to begin our deliberations on a solemn note to indicate our profound and deeply felt collective admiration for the late Chancellor Emeritus Albert H. Baucher, who served CUNY from 1963 to 1971. When he joined CUNY in 1963, there were four senior colleges and just a few community colleges. When he left in 1971, there were 18 campuses, offering associate and baccalaureate degrees, including six community colleges and the Graduate School and University Center. Al Baucher's legacy at CUNY will long endure, and we deeply mourn his loss. I would like to ask now for a moment of silence in Chancellor Baucher's memory. May I now welcome to the table Pamela Silverblatt, our new Vice Chancellor for Labor Relations, as well as Gloriana Waters, who joins us in her new capacity as Vice Chancellor for Human Resources Management. Welcome to both of you.[246.01][246.01](APPLAUSE). I would like to congratulate Trustee Wellington Chen, who was recently featured in a wonderful new book entitled Chinatown, New York: Portraits, Recipes, and Memories by Anne Volkwine. It provides readers with a rich and insightful history of one of the great treasures of our city and nation. I would also like to congratulate Vice Chair Philip Berry and Trustees Rita DiMartino and Hugo Morales, who were honored on December 6th by the New York City Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. Vice Chair Berry received the Trailblazer Award. Trustee DiMartino received the Hispanic Lifetime Leadership Award, and Trustee Morales was presented with the Hispanic Lifetime Scholar Award. I'm also pleased to congratulate Trustee Morales on the award he received from the National Dominican Roundtable for over 50 years of distinguished community service. Congratulations to you.[316.83][316.83](APPLAUSE). I would like to thank Trustee Jeffrey Weisenfeld for hosting a very successful and well-attended event on January 10th in celebration of the 40th anniversary of Lehman College at the Alliance Bernstein Corporate Headquarters. Thank you, Jeffrey. May I now call on Trustee Valerie Beal to announce college and faculty honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hunter College Department of Chemistry and Biochemistry was recently featured in Chemical and Engineering News as being in the top 100 chemistry departments in this country and one of the few, one of the top few in terms of women faculty members. Congratulations. Queens College is a leader in the number of black graduates who have completed PhDs in English, according to a recent study published by the Association of Departments of English. This performance puts Queens College ahead of several Ivy League schools nationally. Congratulations. Two Bronx Community College music professors have recently received honors in their field. Benjamin Yarmensky was awarded the 2007-2008 American Society of Composers, Authors, and Publishers Plus Award in the Concert Music Division, and Joseph and Thomas Sapula received the Aaron Copland Award Summer 2007, and we want to extend our congratulations to them. This concludes my report.
Thank you very much. May I now call on Trustee Kathleen Facilli to announce student and alumni honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Queens College 2007 graduate Ross Herschkowitz was recently cited by Councilman James Gennaro for his bravery and will be honored early next month by his local community board for rushing inside the burning home of an elderly and disabled neighbor and bringing him out from a second-floor window to safety. Keep up the good work and congratulations. Special congratulations are in order to York College for initiating and implementing its first annual student scholarship benefit concert, featuring Off-Broadway's Three Mo Tenors, who played to a packed house. Keep up the good work. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. A list of grants and gifts received by the university since our November 26, 2000, meeting is available at the table and in the trustee's calendar book. I'd like now to call on Chancellor Goldstein to present his report on the recent activities at the university.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to start with your indulgence about my recollection of Al Baucher. Al Baucher was a dear friend of mine for many years. I knew Al through the world of mathematics and statistics, and we hear much about his work here at this university, and I would say that he really set the tone for bold and imaginative and courageous work for Chancellors that came after him. But let me talk a little about the Al Baucher that I knew and reflect about how diverse his interests were and how profound his impact was, not only in higher education as an administrator, but as a mathematician and a very, very fine statistician. Al Baucher started his career at MIT, where he studied mathematics, and then in the early '40s, he went to Columbia University, which at that time, Mr. Chairman, was considered the place to study statistics here in the United States. Many of their students and their PhD programs started at CCNY. You would like to know that, Professor Williams. And many of them went out to Stanford when Al Baucher left with a PhD from Columbia University, and that's where he met his wife, Rose Sitgreaves, who was also a very fine statistician. And it was actually through Rose that I got to know Al Baucher well, because Rose started an area in statistics called discriminant analysis, and several decades later, I put together a much more theoretical foundation of that subject. So we had that kind of professional connection between the two of us, and Al, at that point, and I became very, very good friends. When he left Columbia with a fresh PhD, he went to Palo Alto, where he essentially started a statistics department almost from scratch, with many of the people who were trained at Columbia with him, and many of them were CCNY students to start with, people like Seymour Geiser and Red Holtz, and a whole series of very, very fine people. He got the attention of the president of Stanford University at that point and was appointed dean of the Graduate School at Stanford. Stanford, in those days, was not the powerhouse that he is today, and he left his imprimatur on their Graduate School in a very, very profound way, recruiting some of the most able and promising young scholars, who were trained more in the East and in the Midwest and made their way out to Palo Alto. It was at that time that people on the other coast, mainly the East Coast, got to know about Baucher's work at Stanford University, and he did come, as you said, Mr. Chairman, in 1963, stayed to 1971, and the work that he did was well summarized, and I'm not going to overlap on what it is that you said. But after leaving the City University of New York, he went back to the West Coast, and he became chancellor of the University of California at Berkeley, where he stayed for several years, almost 10 years, and really did very, very important work, also building up some critical departments. Mathematics was strong, very, very strong at that time, but also built it up to the extraordinary place that it is today. In the early '80s, he returned back to Washington, where he had spent a little time before, but not in an official capacity, serving as Assistant Secretary for Post Secondary Education, a post that has not since been filled since Al Baucher did that. He then came a little north, stayed on the East, and worked with Johnny Toll, a very fine physicist, who was then the president of the University of Maryland system, and really built up Maryland as that very strong institution, and then completed his work back at the City University of New York, where he had a position as Vice President for Research at the Research Foundation of the City University of New York. Al was a big opera fan; we had that in common. Very, very well-read. We would exchange books. He would tell me about books he thought I would like, and I did the same with him. He was, Mr. Chairman, a dear friend, someone who I learned much from, somebody who I deeply admired. He cared deeply great about this great university, and I will miss him, and this university owes him a debt of great gratitude for the wonderful work that he did. So I subscribe to what you said; we will surely miss him. Mr. Chairman, several months ago, I reported to you and the Board that our university, in response to the horrific events at Virginia Tech University, that we were moving forward with an enterprise-wide solution that would notify our students, faculty, and staff of an emergency as it was occurring. I asked our Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer, Alan Dobrin, to lead an initiative to put together a system of communication, and I'm pleased to report that last week, we launched the first phase of the new CUNY Alert system. Phase one consists of our students and faculty and staff preregistering to receive emergency alert messages. These messages can be delivered in an audio format, phone calls, or as emails or as text messages. Phase two will be the launch of the notification system. When activated in just two months, we will send emergency messages to registered individuals at a particular college and, if necessary, university-wide. Chairman, I'm pleased to say that CUNY Alert is a true joint venture between the City University of New York and the New York State Office of Emergency Management. CUNY Alert is modeled after NYS Alert and the SUNY Alert system and could not be implemented without their participation and partnership. We have and will continue to work with the college presidents to get the message out about the availability of such an important tool. I hope we never have to use this system, but it gives me a comfort, and I'm sure a comfort of all of us in our university, knowing that such a critical, that such critical information can be shared in a timely way when necessary. So, Alan Dobrin, thank you for rising to the occasion in the way that you did, and we deeply appreciate the very good work that you did. Mr. Chairman, the main event in my presentation is to set the stage for a discussion by Vice Chancellors Malave and Weinsholl on the recommendations that Governor Spitzer has provided in his executive budget, which was released on January 22nd, and the preliminary budget that Mayor Bloomberg just released at the end of last week. I'm not going to discuss any of the numbers; I will leave that to both Vice Chancellor Malave, and then I'll call on Vice Chancellor Weinsholl. But I do want to set the tone for the discussion. For us, in the executive budget, all eyes were focused on the recommendations that came out of the Commission on Higher Education. And all of you here, Board members and the rest of us around this table, know that we, at this university, played a very prominent role in shaping the recommendations that were delivered to the governor as a preliminary report in the very early part of December of last year. Some of the highlights for us were the endorsement of the New York State Compact, which was very, very strenuously and enthusiastically embraced by the full commission and very embraced by this governor. The investment of 2,000 faculty at both CUNY and SUNY, and of course, that investment is over and beyond the investment that we will continue to make at this university. So this continues to be a very high priority for us. And I would say the third area that, for this university, that we have much interest in and are helping to shape is an innovation fund, which the Commission on Higher Education recommended at about a $3 billion level, to be expended over a 10-year period. The purpose of the fund is to engage mainly the universities in the state of New York in basic and applied research that have direct linkages to creating a more fertile economic environment in the state, creating jobs, serving as an attractor for new businesses, and to create a sense of importance in the work of all that we do, mainly in the sciences and in the engineering sciences as well. So we knew that these were the areas that we were going to spend most of our time thinking about when we listened to the governor's speech that he gave at the State of the State on January 9th and when he put together as a budget on the 22nd. What many of us were surprised about was the vehicle that he was proposing to fund a lot of the investment that called for in the commission report that we shared with him. The vehicle is not a complex idea; it has been tried and discussed at other states in the United States, and it's basically to extract the value out of the cash flow that comes as revenue to the state of New York through the New York State Lottery, which is, on a yearly basis, between $6 and $7 billion a year. And the governor's idea is to create the net present value of that cash flow over a period of years, and as a result of that, monetize that cash flow as a single amount of money that could be put into an endowment, which would be generating revenue that can support much of what we had hoped to see in the governor's executive budget. Clearly, this is something that would need legislative approval, and the governor is now, as I understand it, in serious discussions with a consortium of investment bankers that know how to put together a transaction like this, of course, but also to start the process of engagement with the legislature, because there are issues outside of the financial transaction that people will be concerned about. So in this budget, we do not see investment, but the investment is anticipatory if through the vehicle of this transaction connected with the lottery. What we did see in the budget is a very clear statement of stability, especially at the senior colleges. Our mandatory costs are essentially covered, with the exception of some, a small amount of money. It doesn't sound that small, but relative to our base, it's about $16 million, which is under the rubric of efficiencies, and we are hopeful that we will be able to work with the legislature to get that righted and then perhaps some further investment. So we start with what I would call stability, and of course, stability is a word that can become unstable if indeed we see a further serious erosion in the revenues that are coming into the state of New York, largely as a result of the very severe and deep problems that we've seen in the fixed-income market for securities. You've heard about the structured investment vehicles, the collateralized debt obligations, all of these things, mortgage-backed securities that have created havoc in the financial services industry. Much of the budget that the governor was planning on was predicated on a certain amount of profitability in Wall Street and a number much higher than what was realized in 2007, and so we had about 2/3rds of a fiscal year where we were doing fine, and the last third of the year, things fell apart. So on an ongoing basis, it's not clear where indeed revenues are going to be, so I hedge a bit when I say stability. The budget that is coming out of the governor, that will now be remanded for discussion at the legislature, is a very strong starting position in terms of stability, and investment, hopefully, will come as a result of the vehicle that I've just very, very briefly described. The area that I feel much less enthusiastic about on a coming-out-of-the-gate basis is the capital budget. While it is true that the capital budget is the largest that has been proposed in the history of the City University of New York, that a governor has proposed, it is woefully inadequate to deal with many of the deep needs that we have here at this university. We have an aged infrastructure, and it was only in the last maybe 15 years where money was starting to come into the system for rehabilitation and building new buildings. We need a lot more support on the capital side, and that's going to be something that Iris will talk about when I ask her to jump in in just a minute. So we have some work to do there. Most of the projects that we have in the pipeline now will have sufficient funding to carry them through to fruition. The thing that I worry about, Mr. Chairman, is the new projects that a great university has to depend upon, and we have to go out and project these costs and needs on a, you know, maybe a decade or half a decade ahead. So we have some work to do on the capital side. On the preliminary budget that the mayor has proposed, and the mayor will come out with his final executive budget in April, May sometime, there are problems in that budget for the community colleges, both on the operating side and on the capital side. We have a lot of work to do here, and I will call on Ernesto Malave first to give some texture to both the senior college recommendations and the community college, and when you're finished, Ernesto, we'll go right into Iris. And then I have a few additional comments to make after that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ed. Good afternoon, everyone, and happy new year. Let me first tell you what you have before you, you have the final version of the CUNY budget request, which includes all the individual college investment programs, which was not included in the summary documents from before, so at your leisure, feel free to go through that. I will be going over a PowerPoint presentation entitled "2008-2009 State Executive and New York City Preliminary Budget," which is this document here, and I'll go through it very quickly. On page two, and beginning with the senior colleges, the operating budget for the senior colleges totals a little under $1.7 billion, which represents a net increase of $35.9 million, or 2.2% increase above the current year's adjusted budget. That $35.9 million is a net figure. It is all in the form of additional state aid of $35.9 million, or 3.6%. As you can see on page three, when I refer to it as a net figure, it includes $52.7 million to fund all of the university's fringe benefit costs, new building rental costs, and all the inflationary increases. All the mandatory costs you have built into your budget are all accounted for in this budget. And in addition, outside of the university's operating budget, which is included in the document that was approved by the trustees, we had requested $8.5 million to cover our energy costs. And while the state did not include that in the operating budget, it did create a revenue pool outside of the university operating budget of $8.5 million for CUNY. So our energy needs, whether they're $8.5 million, whether they're $11 million, are going to be fully covered in this budget, and that's when I think the chancellor refers to a high level of budget stability. Although we have a challenge, all of our mandatory, our continuing costs are all financed. And all the resources that we received for Compact I and Compact II are all rolled into the base budgets, and colleges will be able to continue making those investments. I'll go to the third dot point before I come back to the second one. The $35.9, I said it was a net number, the $52.7 is the increases. There are $16.7 million in decreases to be achieved for efficiencies, and there were also, not uncommon for executives, the elimination of various legislative add-ons. In this case, $652,000 that the legislature added for the SEEK program, and a half a million dollars that was added for the Joseph P. Murphy Institute. Those were the negative figures. The one new investment initiative in the executive budget was a million-dollar increase for the expansion of nursing programs, and you should know that while that is included in the senior college budget, those funds will be available will be available for community colleges as well. On page four, you'll see the numbers that I just referred to in a different form, the overall increase of 3.6 in state aid and 2.2% overall. On page five, you'll note, as the chancellor indicated, that the budget does not fund and provide the funding that we needed to cover the investment program that we had asked for in the budget request. And if you take into account the reduction of $16.7 million and the requested amount that we have for investment, the shortfall is $74.2 million. And that is what we would need if we wanted to get our entire budget request financed. And that's not what we would need in order to maintain the current level of spending. The chancellor indicated, and the little bit of uncertainty is that the investment program that is scheduled now for now 2009, but 2010, is to be in part financed through this $4 billion endowment, which requires the legislature to approve a scheme that the governor has to lease portions of the lottery. We will know more about that as the legislature considers it and in the adopted budget. So if there's an adopted budget condition that includes an endowment, then we can anticipate some measure of investment, except it will begin not in '09, but in '10. On the next page, you'll just see the numbers very quickly. And the key number there is the, if you look at the mandatory needs, we had requested $62.9 million in mandatory needs, and as you can see, that is virtually covered in the executive budget. The reason for the $1.7 million difference is that basically rounding errors on fringe benefits, so it's not a real concern. The shortfall is in the programmatic initiatives. We had saw $21.4 million in additional state support to finance the compact, and we had saw $33.2 million in revenues from a tuition increase of 5%. The governor did not propose the tuition increase in the executive budget, thus the $33 million that we were anticipating to fund the investment program is not there. When you combine that with the shortfall of $17.49 million, we have a $72.5 million shortfall, and that is what we are going to invite the legislature to consider so we can begin an investment program in 2009. For the community colleges, the executive budget includes a number of positives and negatives. The first one is a $3.1 million reduction in community college aid associated with a reduction in the funding per FTE. Like those two other items for the senior colleges, the so-called legislative add-ons, last year the legislature added $50 base aid increase. Like those items, the executive is reducing that in this executive budget. And you should know, we had asked for, in this budget request, an increase in funding of $200 per FTE in order to fund the investment program. On the other side of the ledger, because of the enrollment growth, which continues at the community colleges, we did receive a $2.1 million increase in funding for that. So that sort of offset the reduction. The Borough Manhattan Community College received the state share of a $5.4 million request that we have for new building needs. That's a very positive development, and we would expect the City of New York to match that, as they always do. And very importantly, the last dot point, the maintenance of effort provision, which requires the local sponsor, in this case, the City of New York, to provide the same level of funding as in prior years, is maintained in the executive budget. So that's the state budget. So on the state side, we have, as the chancellor indicated, we have a challenge to meet, to sort of offset that 1%, which is less than 1% reduction to $16.7 million, and of course, we'll be inviting the legislature to assist us with an investment program. On the city side, for the community colleges, as the chancellor indicated, it's a little bit more challenging. The executive budget, or the preliminary budget, I should say, because the mayor's executive budget is not released until the end of April or early May, after the mayor is able to ascertain the effect of the state adopted budget on the city. He looks at all the revenues that are available and then makes a final determination. But as we speak, it includes a net reduction of $29.8 million, and that includes reductions that were already in place, plus an additional reduction of $9.4 million that was added. You'll recall that the mayor invited us to participate in a PEG exercise. Well, we did, and they've accepted all the recommendations, and they actually added a little bit more to that. But on the positive side, the mayor's executive budget includes financing for mandatory needs in the area of collective bargaining, fringe benefits, and pensions. Outside of the community college budget, the City of New York's budget also includes recommendations to eliminate a lot of programs and largely support the senior colleges. In this case, the $11.2 million program, the Valone Scholarship Program, which largely benefits senior college students, is packed for elimination. This is not new. It's a city council initiative, and the mayor, any other mayor would require the council to restore it. But nevertheless, in these more challenging environments, it becomes a heavy lift. On page nine, the budget, and this is simply just for information purposes, because I don't think this is a real cut, but the current preliminary budget does not include funding for the ASAP program that the university launched this year, nor for the CUNY prep program. Those are two programs that were funded out of the city's poverty commission, and we have been told that once the poverty commission makes a determination as to whether to continue the programs, the dollars would flow. So we expect those dollars, assuming a positive response from the commission, to find its way into the executive budget. And like the Valone Scholarship Program, the budget does not include funding for the City's Asian Immigration Project and the Blackmail Initiative, among other initiatives that are the favorites of the city council. Finally, on page 11, the governor's executive budget included a new financial aid program for veterans in the City of New York, not only for the Persian Gulf conflicts, but going back to Vietnam conflicts in Afghanistan. So New Yorkers who are veterans of New York, in fact, have a tuition-free program for up to $3,550 for any college in the state of New York, both public and private, except that it is no more than the $4,350, which is the tuition level at the State University of New York. So to summarize, I think that the, as the chancellor indicated, that we have a fairly stable environment. We don't have clearly an investment environment yet, but clearly we have a very stable environment going forward, and assuming that there's no further collapse in the financial markets that would require the state of New York to make any mid-year adjustments. On the city side, we worry a little bit about the community colleges, because we both are looking, staring at a cut, at the senior colleges from the state of New York, excuse me, we're staring at a cut from the state of New York as well as from the city of New York. And as you know, the city council is now involved in considering what to restore, and it's a very difficult environment for the city council of New York. Last year, they restored all of our funds, did not give us investment in what was a very good year for the city of New York financially. That is no longer the case, so they're going to have to struggle to make a restoration in this environment. But we're going to be working very hard with the council, and we still have plenty of time between now and the time that the mayor issues the executive budget. Thank you.
Iris?
Yes. In your packets, you'll find a one-page summary of the state budget. As the chancellor noted, we have our work cut out for us and challenges ahead. Having said that, you know, I think one has to look at the positive and not so much the negative. We got an increase of $2.8 billion in our capital budget, and the state re-appropriated $2.6 billion. So going forward over five years, we have $5.4 billion. Having said that, as the chancellor noted, in the area of existing and new projects, we were a tad disappointed in the appropriations made by the state. They did appropriate $960 million for existing and new projects, and what that means is we have a number of projects in construction. Because of inflation and delays and various other reasons, we're going to have to add money to those projects to complete them, but then that will leave us a little bit more money to start new projects. At a previous board meeting, I talked about critical maintenance and critical repair, and that was a category that the state embraced, both on the CUNY and the SUNY side, and they have budgeted $1.4 billion for critical maintenance over five years. They have chosen to appropriate only $284 million, and they will appropriate $284 million for each successive five years. This is a positive note, because it's the first time they've acknowledged that we have critical maintenance issues at CUNY, and the category in which we can use this money is very broad. So we are now working to come up with a list of projects that we feel that we can get done in the next year, because they would like to see that money spent right away. So on the state side, I'll note again, we were a little disappointed. Our program was rather robust, and we thought full of some very good projects, but I don't think one can really sneeze at a $5.4 billion, five-year plan, and we have a lot of work ahead of us. On the capital, on the community college side, the news was not as good. Although they gave us $250 million new dollars to spend, and they appropriated, re-appropriated the money from last year, another $326 million, which gave us about, which gives us now about $586 million, they did not acknowledge the critical maintenance piece on the community college side. And as I've noted before, that will just add to the gap. As I've made in presentations before, really, the areas that are in most need, not to say the four-year schools are not, but the community colleges clearly need a lot of work in the critical maintenance area. The rationale for that was that they're concerned that they appropriate the money and then the city not match it, and then that appropriation would just be sitting there unmatched. And it was quite a disappointment for us, at least not to have a little bit of money on the community college side. On the city side, the news is better from the capital viewpoint. We had a very good, we had some very good news from City OMB, and in particular, it was good news for the community colleges. They have fully funded the building under construction at Medgar Evers, so we will not have to go back to the city. We'll have enough funds to finish that building. They have also appropriated money for the New North Instructional Building at Bronx Community College. They gave us half of what we asked for, but they're very positively inclined to give us the rest of it. So we feel good about that. And the best news is on Fittiman Hall. They had pushed out money for Fittiman Hall in the out years. They moved it back now into 2010, where we could use it, and they are looking forward to having a conversation with us to finally, fully fund Fittiman Hall. So we feel fairly confident on the city side that the community colleges have gotten at least the money that we need to get those projects done. Clearly, though, we need to talk to the state more and the city more about the community colleges, and that's really where the challenge lies for us going forward.
Thank you.
Chairman?
Iris?
Yes. I'd like to make some comment. One of the things that you described, Chancellor, that you started an alert system, which I think is very critical and very important, and you also stated that you hope that will never be used. Well, my feeling is that one of the best ways to avoid this is to perhaps in the near future develop a central office just related to the mental hygiene service in the university, a central office which will have the interacting with all of these campuses and advise all of the students the best way how to deal with the psychological problem. I think that will be something to prevent any tragic consequence in the future. We know that student, the amount of anxiety, depression, and suicide among students is very high. Just last week, I learned about one student that was overwhelmed, and today he's in the medical center. He tried to commit suicide. I believe that the development of a central office for mental hygiene service will be necessary and very important component in the City University, and I hope that will be developed in the near future.
We are very concerned about counseling, professional counseling, especially mental health counseling, and there is now a spirited discussion here at the central office, and I'd like to bring you in, Trustee Morales, with, you know, you're a distinguished psychiatrist, and I think you can help some of our thinking, so I'll be in touch with you to see how to construct some of this. Getting back to the budgets that we have right now presented to us, we have a lot of work to do. I say especially on the capital side, where we have probably the greatest likelihood of getting further consideration in the legislature, and we will be working vigorously in that regard. It is true that we have $5.4 billion in the hopper. That sounds like a tremendous amount of money, but it has to be factored in with the notion that this university, for many decades, really just piled on lots and lots of unmanaged physical facilities, so we have so much to really catch up on, but I'm optimistic that we will get our word across. The other thing that I think Vice Chancellor Weinshaw will agree with is that when the governor started talking about the five-year capital program, there was an intention of creating a lockbox here of, you start out with this program that both the governor and the legislature would agree to, and there would be no further intrusion into those dollars. I believe that there is some rethinking about that, which would give us an opportunity over the next couple of fiscal years to get further enhancements. So we do have a lot of work to do, but I think we will prevail to a much larger extent. Let me just finish up. Mr. Chairman, we have a CUNY Legislative Council that we are working with on communications and outreach. I think we are also going to embed for the first time, and when I addressed the Council of Presidents last week, I emphasized the need for all of us to educate the legislature. You know, it's not just outreach, and it's not just lobbying to get a further consideration for more resources. We really have to educate so many members of the legislature on critical elements that will allow this university and SUNY to do the work that they are capable of doing. And so we have a lot of that work ahead of us. I have asked five presidents to serve as borough coordinators for meetings with the legislature, Ricardo Fernandez from the Bronx, Edison Jackson from Brooklyn, James Meiskins from Queens, Jeremy Travis from Manhattan, and Tomas Morales from Staten Island, and those meetings have started to take place, and more will be happening. I will be up in Albany on Wednesday, testifying in front of the Assembly Ways and Means and the Senate Finance Committee on my observations of the governor's executive budget and where I think challenges remain for us. I'm working with a number of members of the Commission on Higher Education to put some texture on the Innovation Fund, this $3 billion Innovation Fund, and my other colleagues are John Sexton of NYU, Joel Seligman of the University of Rochester, along with John Clark, the interim chancellor of SUNY, and we will have recommendations very soon with respect to how we believe the Innovation Fund should be structured, and hopefully that will see the day of light, when that revenue that we hope will be forthcoming through this vehicle that I mentioned earlier. On February 16th, we will host the annual CUNY luncheon during the Black Puerto Rican, Hispanic, and Asian Legislative Conference in Albany. That is an event that gets many of the legislators at our luncheon, and gives us an opportunity to talk about the things that we need beyond that was provided in the governor's budget. We are working now at the governor's office on the 30-day amendment period. This is a period which allows the university to appeal to the governor on technical changes to the proposed budget, and we are certainly working closely with the mayor's office and the city council on enhancements to the preliminary budget of the city of New York. I'd like to just mention that Jay Hirschenson and Gary Moore are working with the university's Student Senate and student leaders on a new training program called Student Investment Ambassadors to establish a cadre of speakers and educational advocates inspired by the eloquent testimony of so many of the students during the hearings that were held on the Commission on Higher Education. You all know that 2000-- You all know that 2005 through 2015 continues to be the decade of science at this university. I'm pleased to inform the board that the New York City Science and Engineering Fair in New York City, which approximately has gone on for about 60 years here in the city, which has passed and been run by the New York Academy of Sciences, along with collaborations through Polytechnic University, is now a CUNY-run event. We were chosen by the DOE to take on that important effort. Approximately 100 CUNY faculty have signed up to serve as judges, and it gives us a wonderful opportunity to work with promising young students in the high schools who expressed interest in science. We are also very much involved in the science festival that'll take place. This is an international effort that will take place in the city of New York. The brainchild is our friend Brian Greene, a very renowned physicist and mathematician at Columbia University, who thought up the idea of creating a Davos kind of an event in a yearly way here in New York City. And CUNY is going to be very much a part of this world science summit. And finally, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to congratulate President Jennifer Rabb on being selected by the ABA as one of 20 members of the Direct Women Board Institute's class of 2008. The institute and workshop are designed to develop and support the placement of women lawyers on corporate boards of major public companies. And Jennifer, congratulations. That's a singular honor for us. And lastly, Mr. Chairman, Baruch College, and I want to congratulate President Waldron on this, was the recipient of the Theodore Heisberg Award this year, which is a very prestigious award for a communication program that was started several years ago by a benefactor at Baruch, Marvin Schwartz, a, I'm sorry, Bernard Schwartz, I'm sorry. Bernard Schwartz, who's been connected with Baruch for many years. And Kathleen, congratulations. That's a wonderful honor. And that concludes my report.
Are there questions or comments for the Chancellor on his report? All right. We'll turn now to the policy items that require a vote. I will move the adoption of the Chancellor's University Report for January 28, 2008. There are copies of that report on the table. May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstention? That carries. Next, I'd like to move the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting and the executive session of November 26, 2007. You have a copy of the draft minutes in your meeting books. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or revisions to the minutes? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Minutes are adopted. We'll turn next to our committee reports. We'll hear first from the Committee on Fiscal Affairs, Trustee Mark Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Fiscal Affairs met on January 7, 2008, and approved the following resolution. Calendar item 3A is a resolution to authorize the General Counsel to execute an agreement to purchase three digital library collections from the Gail Group, Inc., on behalf of the City University of New York. These collections are The Making of the Modern World, The Economist Historical Archive, and The Eighteenth Century Collections Online. The contract shall be awarded as a sole source pursuant to university regulations and applicable law. The total amount of the purchase agreement is $554,000 payable in four annual installments. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of this item.
All right. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Item carries?
The committee also heard a report from Vice Chancellor Malavi on the preliminary report of findings and recommendations issued by the Commission on Higher Education established by Governor Eliot Spitzer, and a report on the status of state and city budgets. The committee also received an update on the performance of the university's investment pool and an announcement that a search for a chief investment officer was in progress. In addition, Mr. Chairman, I wish to report that the board audit subcommittee was presented by the independent audit firm of KPMG with the results of the university's fiscal year 2007 audited financial statements. I'm pleased to report the audit yielded a clean and unqualified opinion from the CPA firm. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Academic Policy Program and Research. Call on Trustee Wellington Chen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In this January meeting, the committee approved three policy matters. Policy items, calendar item number 4A, School of Professional Studies at the Graduate School and University Center, MA in Applied Theater. This program prepares graduates for work as scholars, practitioners in the field of applied theater, using elements of theater and drama in community outreach and educational settings. Graduates are expected to find employment in fields such as personnel development, health education, and nonprofit work. Calendar number 4B, the City College, MSED in Educational Theater. The program is designed to meet the New York State Education Department requirements and to lead to initial certification as a K-12 classroom teacher in theater. Recognizing the many benefits of arts education for academic and social development of the students, the New York State Education Department recently reinstated a certification in theater. Thus, there's an increased need for certified theater teachers in all grades. Calendar number 4C, College of Staten Island, abolition of the Department of Student Services. This action is consistent with the common practice across CUNY to focalize services offered to students in a division of the college rather than an academic department. New counselors are typically hired on HEO lines rather than teaching faculty lines. Due to retirements and lack of new hires in faculty lines, the CSI Department of Student Services no longer has a sufficient number of faculty to be sustained. The structure of the division of the student services remains unchanged by this action. Services offered to students are not in any way affected. Item 4A through 4C were approved by the committee, and I recommend the approval by the board.
Thank you very much. May I have a second?
Second.
Questions for the committee? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Those items carry.
Okay. Informational items. Executive Vice Chancellor Bartman also presented two informational items to the committee. CUNY Law School, Center for Diversity in the Legal Profession. This center will provide educational and community outreach services in order to promote participation of minorities in the legal profession. The center plans to host an annual conference, conduct research, and publish its results. Prepare educational materials for the larger community on careers in law and partner with other CUNY entities, both colleges and programs such as the Black Male Initiative. The CUNY School and University Center, the Leon Levy Center for Biography. Leon Levy, a Wall Street investment banker, was a philanthropist and a CUNY graduate. The graduate school has received a major grant from the Leon Levy Foundation to support the establishment and operating costs of the Leon Levy Biography Center. The new center will fund the research and writing of the several biographies each year, support conferences, seminars, and other scholarly activities related to the field. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Faculty Staff and Administration. I'd like to call on Trustee Valerie Beal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Faculty Staff and Administration presents the following items for consideration by the Board of Trustees. Item 5A, naming of the Bert Wiseman Department of Economics and Finance at Baruch College. Sandra Wiseman, class of 1955, and her late husband Bert have been active and generous supporters of Baruch College for many years, and both have served as trustees of the Baruch College Fund. The Wiseman's generosity to the college has included establishing an endowed chair as well as the Wiseman Trading Floor. In recognition of their generosity, Mr. Wiseman's legacy, and Mrs. Wiseman's continued support in the form of a gift to support finance education, the college seeks to name the Department of Economics and Finance at the Zicklin School of Business after Bert Wiseman, visionary leader and benefactor. Mr. Chair, I present item 5A for the board's approval.
I have a second.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries?
Thank you. Items 5B through 5I are a series of endowed chairs, professorships, and other namings at Brooklyn College that were submitted to ensure compliance with the university policy. Likewise, items 5J through 5W pertain to namings at the City College of New York, LaGuardia Community College, and the Graduate School and University Center. The Board Committee on Faculty Staff and Administration has considered and approved these items, copies of which are in your packets, and therefore I wish to present items 5B through 5W as a group.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions about any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you. Items 5X, Resolution Regarding Amendments to the Governance Plan of Queens College. The proposed amendments to the Queens College Governance Plan have been approved by the Academic Senate and are recommended by the college president. The revised plan, which reduces the overall number of members but maintains a ratio of 2/3 faculty and 1/3 students, is designed to achieve greater attendance and allow the body to comply with the open meetings law and meet legally mandated quorum and majority vote requirements. Mr. Chair, I present item 5X for the board's approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That carries.
Thank you. Item 5Y, Resolution Regarding Proposed Revisions to the PSC CUNY Welfare Fund Trust Indenture. The PSC CUNY Welfare Fund, the professional staff Congress CUNY, and the City University of New York undertook a review of the fund's trust documents and have agreed to revisions. The revised trust indenture incorporates, modifies, and supersedes three documents: the trust indenture, the tripartite agreement, and the welfare fund clarification agreement. This resolution approves the revised trust indenture and authorizes the Chancellor to execute it. Mr. Chair, I present item 5Y for the board's approval.
I'll second that. Are there questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That carries.
Item 5Z, Resolution to Approve the Continuation of Military Leave and Employer-Paid Health and Welfare Benefits Coverage. In response to the continuing need for American servicemen and women in the National Guard and Reserves to be activated for military service, this resolution authorizes continuation of military leave and health and welfare benefits for City University employees who are activated by the armed services of the federal government or by the governor of New York for active service between September 11, 2001, and December 31, 2008. Mr. Chair, I present item 5Z for the board's approval.
I'll second that.
Second.
Comments? Questions? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That carries.
Thank you. Item 5AA, 1 through 5. I am pleased to present for your consideration the appointments of the following distinguished professors effective February 1, 2008. At Hunter College, Professor Peter Carey in the Department of English. At Baruch College, Professor Gail Levin in the Department of Fine and Performing Arts. At the Graduate School and University Center, Professor James Oates in the Department of History. At the City College of New York, Professor Michael Sorkin in the School of Architecture. And at Queens College, Professor Fred Gardafi in the Department of Italian-American Studies. Mr. Chair, I present these appointments for the board's approval.
I'll second those appointments. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Those appointments carry.
Mr. Chair, I'm delighted that several of these distinguished scholars are here with us today. In addition, I would like to invite Presidents Waldron, Kelly, and Williams to introduce and say a brief word about their distinguished scholars and ask them to do so now. We'll start with President Waldron.
Professor Gail Levin is in Europe on a Fulbright, so she will not be with us today. But I would like to just thank everyone for recommending her. Professor Levin is a very distinguished art historian who has, is presently on a Fulbright program as a distinguished research chair of the Roosevelt Study Center in Holland. She has, in the past, published many books. Her most famous books are on Edward Hopper, a 700-page biography of Hopper, which was nominated or named by the Wall Street Journal as one of the 100 most influential books in art in the last century. In addition, Professor Levin has written a groundbreaking work on Judy Chicago, and she's presently working on a Lee Presner autobiography in the cultural perspective of 20th-century New York. Professor Levin has been a longtime faculty member at Baruch College and has distinguished herself in her teaching, her research, and her service to the community.
Thank you. Professor William Kelly?
I'm delighted to introduce Professor.
President William Kelly.
Professor Carey is currently at the table.
So we should call on President Rabb first.
Okay. I apologize. President Rabb, Jennifer Rabb.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm greatly privileged and delighted to introduce our distinguished professor, Peter Carey. Peter's quite simply one of the world's foremost contemporary literary artists. He is at the top of the field of English-language novelists. There is simply no better novelist now working in North America. And I would not be in the slightest surprised if sometime in the next decade he were to win a Nobel Prize. I cannot think of another novelist writing in English who is more deserving. I believe all the things wholeheartedly that I just said, but I didn't actually think of them first. The first comment was from Salman Rushdie, the second from Jonathan Franzen, and the third from Russell Banks. So you can see from these comments and the people who wrote on behalf of Peter just how extraordinary Peter is as a writer and what a great addition he is to the City University faculty. Peter is one of only two people to win the coveted Booker Prize twice. He's won two Commonwealth Prizes, three Miles Franklin Awards, which is Australia's Pulitzer Prize, and the list goes on. I hope all of you will see for yourself by reading his new book, which is so hot up the presses that I wasn't actually able to bring copies for all of my colleagues, but we will get them. We got Peter's last copies from the publisher, and you will probably see a lot of him on his book tour. I can speak with more personal expertise on Peter's role as an extraordinary teacher, mentor, and academic leader at Hunter College. Hunter's writing MFA is the best in the city, and that's not just my opinion, but was recently written in The Village Voice. And what's so extraordinary is that we were able to accomplish this credential in a short five years. Peter had taught at Princeton, at Stanford, at so many elite universities, but when we met, he wanted to come to Hunter College to build a program with the City University population, immigrants, first, and their families to go to college. And this was a population he felt had an edge and a rawness to tell their stories, and he was so very, very right. We now have hundreds of applications for very few spots, and all of the students are extremely engrossed and feel that they're getting extraordinary attention and extraordinary career opportunities. Together, we created the Hurtig Fellowship Program, which places our young writers with extraordinary writers such as Salman Rushdie, Toni Morrison, Jonathan Franzen, and the list goes on. And all of these people who are very close friends and colleagues of Peter's, he asks to come to Hunter College. So we have distinguished writing series. We're writers such as Frank McCourt and Ann Carson in the next few months, and many of the other names I mentioned, work with the students, and give readings to the Hunter community. So this is a program that somewhat of Peter's stature often would be found as purely a figurehead. In our case, Peter has just thrown himself into nurturing and growing this program to make it the quality that it is, and he is truly, truly tireless in his efforts. It's been one of the great privileges of my tenure to be able to work with Peter and to help support him as he's worked with our students, and they created something so important for this university. So I thank you very much, and I'm so happy that the next time Peter gets one of these wonderful awards, they will note that he is a CUNY distinguished professor.
Thank you very much. Welcome to you, Professor Carey. Welcome to you, Professor Carey.
Is the microphone on?
I think it will be if you try. Yep.
It's very, it's very odd being an Australian in New York City. I mean, there's so many different people, so many different nations and ethnic groups, but I think it's only the Australians who get asked, "When are you going home?" And so, I mean, there's not a, as far as I know, an Australian neighborhood in Queens or... And there's no easy explanation for how we belong here or what we might contribute or connect, and it's really, really true that this is what Hunter College, Jennifer Rab gave to me in the city, that in the classrooms in Hunter, I found students who were grappling with all the things that, as an Australian, you grapple with all your life, which is really, I'm not going to give my Australian history lecture about the country that begins with the penal colony and the genocide and how the, how the trauma keeps on being acted out over and over and over forever, but I will say that it does breed some sort of self-doubting and conflicted people who are always belonging in two places at once. And this is the problem on the opportunity and the gift my students have. And they are really often, the student from British Guiana is, I think at first, in fact, I know because he told me, astonished of this white guy who sort of understands all the issues of colonialism and the, and the question of how you have to use your own language and not betray it, and how, at the same time, you really passionately wish to address the center and be known by the center at the same time as being true to yourself. And weirdly, you see, this is what it's like to be an Australian. And, and by, not by any good judgment on my part, but a sort of good luck and Jennifer Rab's incredible insistence, I found myself in this very privileged place, which gives me great, great pleasure and which, well, I am at home in Australia too, but this has become my home. I've become today, finally, at last, I think, at least, a New Yorker. Thank you very much.
And Professor Myskins will speak to, I can call you Professor.
Professor, thank you. Trustee Beal.
I'd like to say just a few words about our newest distinguished professor, Professor of English and Director of Italian-American Studies. He unfortunately cannot be with us today. He comes to us from the State University of New York at Stony Brook, where he was a longtime director of their groundbreaking Italian-American Studies program. He's written and edited many books, including From Wise Guys to Wise Men, Leaving Little Italy, and Italian Signs: American Streets, which won the Fondizi Giovanni Angeli Italian Ministry of Foreign Affairs Award and was selected as an outstanding academic book for choice. As one of the founders of the Bordegie Press, an editor of VIA, Voices in Italian Americana, the editor of the State University of New York's press series in Italian-American Studies, and past president of the American Italian Historical Society, Professor Gardafi has been instrumental in establishing the field of Italian-American studies and creating a sense of community among Italian-American writers. Professor Gardafi says he's coming to the City University of New York for one special purpose, to create the best American studies program in the world, and we believe he's just the man to do it. Thank you.
And Professor Kelly?
Thank you, Trustee Beal. Good afternoon, everyone. It's with great pride and deep personal pleasure that I introduce to you James Oaks. Professor Oaks is a leading historian of nineteenth-century America. As a faculty member at Princeton, at Northwestern, and at the Graduate Center, he has engaged the seminal questions that dominated American intellectual life from the Revolution through the Civil War. More particularly, he is one of the world's most distinguished authorities on the history of American slavery. His first book, The Ruling Race: A History of American Slaveholders, redefined the intellectual landscape of that field of inquiry. Before Oaks's book, no systematic study of slave owners had been undertaken. Prior scholarship focused almost exclusively on the largest slaveholders, the plantation owners who figure so prominently in Southern Romanticism, the Scarlett O'Hara's of the world, if you will. Oaks' intensive archival scholarship centered instead on more typical slave owners, economically marginal figures whose lives were marked by instability and westward movement. Oaks thereby replaced a paternalistic, pre-capitalist model of Southern life with one deeply enmeshed in the market revolutions, rap, market revolution and the contradictions of liberal economic theory. Oaks' second book, Slavery and Freedom: An Interpretation of the Old South, extended and refined the argument of the ruling race and solidified his reputation as one of the preeminent historians of his generation. Most notably, that book recentered the relationship between slavery and liberal capitalism. Its keen understanding of the tensions inherent in commercial humanism and its resetting of American slavery in a comparativeist context stimulated much subsequent work on Southern social history and touched off a decade-long scholarly debate. Professor Oaks' most recent book, The Radical and the Republican: Frederick Douglass, Abraham Lincoln, and the Triumph of Antislavery Politics, was widely hailed and wonderfully well-reviewed when it was published last year. It is well on its way to becoming a classic text in antebellum political history. David Donald, America's preeminent Lincoln scholar, argued that, quote, "No other historian has so clearly explained Douglass's changing political affiliations, nor do I know of another account of Lincoln shifting positions on emancipation that is so fool and so convincing." One of the Graduate Center's most effective teachers and most dedicated citizens, Professor Oaks is only now entering his scholarly prime. We have greatly benefited from his presence among us, and we expect much more to come. Finally, I take particular pride, as I'm sure you will as well, in noting that Professor Oaks is one of our own. He is a nineteen seventy-four alumnus of Baruch College. I introduce him to you with great delight and unrestrained enthusiasm.
I arrived here thirty-eight years ago this month at Baruch College, ready and eager to set, set myself on a path to a distinguished career in international banking. Nothing went wrong. Thanks to a freshman English composition professor who called me to her office at the end of the first semester and said, "I don't care what you major in, but if you major in business, you will be bored to tears." Whether she was right or wrong, I don't know, but she was followed shortly thereafter by a, a teacher of American history, Selma Beryl, who told me in the first weeks of her introduction to American history that I had the makings of a good historian, and two years later suggested to me that I get a PhD. I wasn't even sure I knew what a PhD was at that point. I was a Catholic school working-class boy from Staten Island, but I left four years after I arrived and on my way to Berkeley. And so the first thing I want to say to you all this afternoon is that I came to life intellectually at the City University, and for that, I am profoundly grateful. I spent eight years at Berkeley. I went to Princeton, spent five years there, twelve years at Northwestern, and when the offer came from the CUNY Graduate Center, it was partly just the attraction of coming home, but also it was, for me at that moment in my intellectual life, a lifeline, the last chance, I thought, to see if I could continue as a scholar. And I found myself, when I got here for the first time in a very long time, in a department with colleagues who were genuinely enthusiastic about their own scholarship and about each other scholarships, who every day poked their heads into each other's offices and asked, "How, how are you doing? How's your book coming? Listen to what I just found," and things like that. And the tone of intellectual excitement at the Graduate Center was set at the top, I think, by a person who, if I may say so, is, in my experience, the finest academic administrator it's ever been my privilege to work with. I find myself now, at the age of fifty-four, more productive, more excited about my work than I've ever been in my life, and so the second thing I would like to say to you all is that I came back to life intellectually at the City University of New York, and for that, too, I am profoundly grateful. And if I have any regrets, it's that Professor Newton, my freshman composition teacher, and Selma Beryl can't be here this afternoon so that I could thank them along with, along with yourselves for this promotion you're considering me for today. And one last coda, I have another enormous debt of gratitude to the City University of New York that isn't in my vida, and it's my, in September, my five-year-old son started, started kindergarten at the Hunter College Elementary School. And he's in love with the place, and so am I, and so, thank you all.
You hit the jackpot.
I hit the jackpot. Thank you very much.
And last but not least, President Williams.
Thank you, Trustee Beal. Unfortunately, Professor Sorkin can't join us today, but I am pleased to share a few words about him and his accomplishments with you. He's an internationally renowned architect and scholar. His prior teaching includes stints at Harvard, Columbia, Yale, Cooper Union, as well as lectures and teaching across North America, Europe, Asia, and Africa. Over twenty-five years, he has had great experience as a practitioner and a theorist. He's considered by his peers to be one of the most respected and important urban architects in the world and a leading educator and intellectual, in fact, a true visionary. His publications, many of his publications are considered classics, and he has addressed some of the most complex and controversial subjects possible on urbanism in books like The Next Jerusalem and After the World Trade Center: Rethinking New York City. He's involved in projects in New York City and around the world, and we are truly fortunate to have him at City College and the City University of New York. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last item is item five BB, a resolution regarding the disposition of authority to the Vice Chancellor for Human Resource Management and the Vice Chancellor for Labor Relations. At its meeting on November twenty-sixth, two thousand and seven, the Board of Trustees appointed a Vice Chancellor for Human Resource Management and a Vice Chancellor for Labor Relations in place of a Vice Chancellor for Faculty and Staff Relations. This resolution authorizes the chancellor to designate the specific functions to be performed by either the Vice Chancellor for Human Resource Management or the Vice Chancellor for Labor Relations. Mr. Chair, I present item five BB for the board's approval.
I'll second that. Any questions? Comments? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? That carries.
Thank you. And lastly, I'd like to note that Vice Chancellor Waters distributed to the committee for information two reports on the number and type of discrimination and sexual harassment complaints received and handled by the university. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll turn next to the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. I'd like to call on Trustee Jeffrey Weisenfeld.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The members of the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management considered five items at the meeting of January seventh. These action items are listed in this board meeting as calendar items six A through six E, which we'll take in aggregate. Item six A is a resolution accepting the design for the restoration of the one ninety-nine Chambers Street facade project at Borough of Manhattan Community College. BMCC will repair the facade of its main campus building at one ninety-nine Chambers Street to comply with the public safety as per local law eleven ninety-eight and applicable sections of New York City and state building codes. The construction budget for this project is three point four seven four million. Item six B is a resolution authorizing a construction contract on behalf of York College to construct a crosswalk from one hundred fifty-ninth to one hundred sixtieth street. York College will construct a sidewalk connecting its new one hundred fifty-ninth Street pedestrian mall to one hundred sixtieth street, which will facilitate the flow of college-bound pedestrians from the subway and bus stops of Jamaica Center to its main campus buildings. The con- contract shall, course, shall not exceed five hundred thousand dollars. Item six C is a resolution authorizing a student housing facility on the campus of Queens College. Too bad couldn't authorize this in nineteen seventy-five. The chancellor and the college president have determined that providing a resident facility on the Queens College campus would promote and enhance the educational mission of the college and university. The direct construction cost is estimated at approximately forty-four to forty-six million dollars. Item six D is a resolution authorizing a lease of nine thousand square feet of space at three ninety-one Eastern Parkway in Brooklyn on behalf of Medgar Everest College. The proposed ten-year, ten-year lease will provide the college with additional space for classrooms, seminar rooms, and offices to help relieve overcrowded conditions on campus. Base annual rental is not expected to exceed two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in the first year of the term, with an escalation of three percent per annum for each year thereafter. And finally, item six E is a resolution authorizing a lease of six thousand square feet of space at thirty dash twenty Thompson Avenue in Long Island City on behalf of LaGuardia Community College. The space will be used by LaGuardia Community College to operate its accelerated study and associates program more effectively. Base annual rent is not expected to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars per annum in the first year and escalate three percent per annum in each subsequent year of the term. I request your approval of these calendar items.
Thank you very much. I'll second the committee's mo- the, the motion. Are there questions on any of the items for the committee? Not? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Those items carry.
This concludes our report.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public business for this session. We have no need for an executive session, so I declare the meeting adjourned.